See none, we'll entertain the motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number NB1.
For the final plan and combined plat?
Yes.
Here's second.
Second.
Hearing first and second, those in favor of the Valley Creek addition tracks one or two for the final plat and combined plat as presented say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no, motion carries. We'll now hear on item number two, for the Majestic Point addition for block two lot 31R replat, we do have three items of, we have to take separately for this. So the first that we will hear is the final or combined replat, and we're going to hear this before the variance request, is that correct, Mr. Grummers? Is that what it's called?
Uh, yes, sir.
So we have two variance requests, but the first would be the final plat and the combined plat, which is item number one. Mr. Grummers, will the line be used for handling this item?
I'll, I'll bring this one in, Mr. Chair, thank you. So, uh, this was, this is a proposed lot merger in the Majestic Point addition. They're requesting to merge two lots into one, two residential lots. The zoning is R1, and replat, as it's done right now, would create a double frontage lot, along with a lot that would be more than three times as deep as it is wide. Comments from residents adjacent to lot 49 is concerned of accessory units too close to the street frontage impacting property values of his and surrounding residences. And then North Little Rock Waste Water Utility has facilities in the easement, in between the lots, and those will, they will not approve any structure being built on the easement or movement of the easement. The resident is requesting merger of the lot so that he could utilize an extension in his backyard for the purpose of installing a pool and accessory units for that. Based on that, we received three comments, on the staff comments, we had one comment that came in that was new, was inquiring about it. We explained the variances and the possibility of the pool, the resident did not say for or against of the replat. And then we had two residents that came in after the submission to the commission, and one of the residents was opposed. The other resident was opposed, but came back and is more neutral, looking at either, they're not necessarily for it, but if it is to be considered, they want the conditions as established by the staff to be considered. Staff recommendations on this were to, if commissioners approve, then a 30-foot non-clearing buffer along Crestview Drive to be indicated on the plat, a 50-foot rear building setback from Crestview Drive to be indicated on the plat, to add a note to the plat that no fence may encroach into the 30-foot non-clearing buffer, and add a note to the plat stating no access from Crestview Drive, any construction traffic must access from Majestic Circle. So I did meet with a couple of residents yesterday that were concerned about it, the ones that had came in, and they are concerned about the impacts it would have to the surrounding neighborhood, concerns that utilization of this lot, as it was not, as it was not intended originally platted those concerns and the impacts to property values. So, uh, staff is neutral on this. So, for the most part, if commissioners choose to approve the lot merger, staff does recommend approval of our conditions as well. Originally, the plat that you're shown, and we provided a print copy, that five-and-a-half-by-eleven copy that I provided you, does show some red marks that are modified from when we received the plat. The plat actually showed a 20-foot non-clearing buffer and a 30-foot building setback. I marked up a red line to show where a 50-foot building setback would be on the lot if you were to approve that. So mine was a little bit more extensive because the 50 feet would bring the line back closer in about midway of the adjacent property, so that it doesn't come up closer to the front of the property, and would, to me, would be a lesser impact if they did use that as an extended backyard. And it would still give them room in order to build a pool with any accessory buildings.
I do have a question, Mr. Grummers, and I, and the, so in our action, the order of action here is that, is you'll move forward with the final plat or combined plat, then the, then it becomes one lot based on that action, and then if the variance request fails, then the owner has a combined plat, final plat that may be not desirable, he may want to keep it separate as two lots.
Right, well, technically, you, if you didn't approve the variances, then you couldn't really approve the plat. I wanted the plat in front so that you could see the, what's going on with the actual lot itself to discuss that.
Yes, you have to have a combined lot to act on the variance, too.
Correct.
Very good. Okay, well, with the action, with the, with the item introduced here to the public, we will hear public comment, we're going over, that they will receive. The first public comment I received was from Ms. Duane Barry. Ms. Barry, would you please approach the podium, and appreciate you for putting your information on, but for the record, go ahead and state your address if you would please.
Okay, I live at 128 Majestic Circle.
Could you breathe a little bit?
I live at 128 Majestic Circle.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. We do have some latitude, we have three comments, just ask you to be short and succinct, I'm not going to put a timer on just yet, but we just ask that you be short and succinct.
Okay, well, I got like a little.
You may, you may bring the comment card. You're actually the applicant, so you have standing. You're actually the applicant, so you have standing, you don't need a card.
Ready?
Just continue.
Okay, and I'm going to talk about all three items on that.
Understand.
Okay. My husband and I, like I said, live at Majestic Circle. We are here to object to all three of the requests regarding 125 Majestic Circle. All of us purchased our homes lots based on the presence of an approved subdivision plat that showed harmonious design of lots, lots of a common shape and design. None were designed as estate-type lots that are spacious enough to accommodate outbuildings, sporting venues, pools, courts, pickleball courts, basketball, tennis. Lots were more of a modest size have, and have been approved with large degrees of building coverage. The property owner in question purchased their lot and/or home knowing what the size and slope of the lot was, and was aware of those limitations for any future addition of a pool. We ask the commission to deny the plat changes for combined plat because it is not harmonious with the current lot, lot pattern, which we relied upon to invest in our home. We also request the commission to deny both variances because the owner has failed to identify any extraordinary hardships or practical difficulties that restrict, that result from strict compliance. It appears that the planning commission cannot identify any of its required findings, more specifically, will it be interest to other property? Yes, granting it will be interest to the, injurious, to those other properties facing Crestview that have the expectation of improved frontages of single-family homes and to oldest subdivisions homeowners who relied on plat maps with harmonious lot design. Are the conditions upon which the request is based unique to this property? No, the conditions referenced by the owner, lot size and slope, are quite common in the subdivision and are not unique. Will the owner be deprived of reasonable use of his property because of physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions, strict application of this chapter? No, the owner has reasonable use of a single-family home. Will the variances vary provisions of zoning, master street plan, land use plan? We understand that the sketch plan published on the city's website has changed, so we don't know how it varies, but since there is not a hardship and there is not a practical difficulty, is a moot point. Is the variance not based solely on financial difficulties but has other hardships? Repeat again, there are no hardships, the property is used as a single-family dwelling. We respect, request, we respectfully request the commission to deny the plat changes and request a variance because no hardship or practical difficulty has been demonstrated, and any approval would disrupt the harmonious design of the neighborhood and injure our reliance on city-approved plat maps to make investment decisions for our homes. We appreciate your time and look forward to negative votes on these requests. Thank you.
And just a matter of clarification, the smittle packet that was submitted online was provided by the applicant, and then the staff provided the comments. So the applicant didn't have the time or the opportunity to respond, but we do have that in front of us tonight, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have another comment card here from Mr. Dennis Blackwell.
Can you move your mic a little bit closer so we can hear you?
Oh, sure, we have another comment card from Mr. Dennis Blackwell.
I'm Dennis Blackwell, I live at 112 River View Drive in Majestic Point, and I request we deny this because I'm concerned about our property values. We bought this almost 15 years ago, knowing, or hoping to be a residential area and stay residential, and I don't think this fits the residential plan. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. The last comment card I have tonight is from Mr. Chris Plant.
Chris Plant, 106 Crestview Drive. Been a resident up there for about 18 years, same thing with, you know, what Dennis mentioned, that, you know, I've moved to this neighborhood with a, you know, desire to live in a single-resident neighborhood and not for, like I said, tennis courts, pools, or whatever, and I think it will affect the value of our neighborhood personally. We have enough problems with no dedication of our streets. We have people buying lots and pouring gravel and parking 50-foot RVs, and we've got issues up there, and I just don't want to continue this. I want to try to preserve our neighborhood as much as possible. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Plant. I understand the applicant would like to speak on his behalf.
Yes, thanks so much. Appreciate your comments.
I understand the concerns. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Mike Burleson, and I'm 125 Majestic Circle.
Thank you.
We have been there approximately two years, a little bit over two years now. Haven't met most of these folks, met a few of them, and when we originally bought the lot, we, we do have a pretty good slope in the backyard, and they're not all the same, so the slopes differ, you know, per lot, so some are more extreme than others. Nobody knows what our lot looks like except for us. Yes, we did, when we did buy the lot, we weren't intending to put a pool. We have two kids now, and so we, we had thought, you know, it would be nice to get a pool, and it's going to be difficult to put in our lot with the slope, and we have a big oak tree in the back, we'd kind of like to keep that for shade. So our original recommendation, or our original plan was to combine the lots and then have a small structure on Crestview that resembled a house, but would be quite smaller, with a driveway, garage, like that, and then have the pool in between. But we decided that that was not a good course of action. That probably would cause some issues with the surrounding neighborhood, you know, as far as the structure just not being in compliance. I did reach out, I had reached out to Cypress Bay Development prior to any of this, you know, just to ask them, you know, what are my options here? And they said they were going to waive the requirement for the structure size, but we're just going to, we don't even want to, you know, address that at this point. All we want to do is just put the pool over the easement, and then just fence it into the setback and leave the natural area. So I don't see how this is going to be detrimental to any property values because, for several reasons. We plan to be there, you know, for quite, quite some time, we have no intention to sell. But if that did come up, those two lots, you know, platted, replatted, whatever, could be separate. The only thing was, would be a pool in the back of that lot. There's still plenty of room up front to clear, put in a house, and make it match just like everything else there. Our, our current plan, we'll have the, the pool fenced in with the, the natural area in front, so you're not going to see anything except for trees. I mean, I don't know what the difference is going to be if we keep it a lot full of trees, or if we have a lot where we have trees in the front and a small clearing in the back and pools. I, I just, I fail to see how that's going to be detrimental to anybody's property value as far as this lot can be, you know, put back to any kind of state at this point, besides, you know, they don't have a pool in there. So, and as, as was mentioned before, there is a lot, two houses, I believe, down from you guys, that has gravel and an RV in it, and it's, and this is nothing compared to that. I mean, this is just going to have a natural area and a pool in the back. All we want is just a pool for the kids. We didn't know it was going to be this much trouble, I mean, we're not trying to cause trouble, we just wanted to put a pool in, that's all we wanted. And we're not, I don't see how this is, I haven't, nobody's proven to me how this is going to be detrimental to property values. I think it's just, it, it's different, yes, it's not exactly what we had planned or what we intended, but, you know, this is, this is where we are. We have the two lots now, and we're just trying to utilize at least a portion of it. We, we don't necessarily want to use the entire lot at this point. We want to keep it natural and, you know, try to keep the neighborhood looking good.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of applicant?
Yes.
Ms. White?
I'm curious, I've heard from residents not directly next to that property. Did you talk with the resident on 113 Crestview Drive?
The gentleman, I hear, yes, I did, I did speak with them.
Are we allowed to ask?
Sure.
The feedback from that? Or if you could raise the feedback, or, I don't want to put anybody on the spot.
Well, I tried to do my homework. I actually went up there yesterday, drove around, I did see the RV on that lot, so I don't know if that is a lot that's owned, but I saw that. And I was curious, again, the impact on Crestview to the neighbors on Crestview, what that would look like if I'm sitting, living next door, across the street, and the home across the street's a corner lot, and, and the pool's quite visible. But what I saw, and I was telling Chris, when you're in the car, there, there's a slope up, and I don't know what degrees, I don't know all that, but it wasn't like directly flat. So it would be up from the road is how I saw that. And I, I'm exaggerating height, but I thought about that, too, if it's set back far enough with green space, so that's what I was trying to get a feel for as I drove around in the neighborhood, but I was curious if, again, the residents in 113 had concerns.
First off, my name's Keith Jutan. We, when we bought that house, it was woods all the way around us. We had no houses, nothing. And, and when we bought that house, we were given a bill of assurance from the developers and the previous, and that's what we expected. We, we didn't, when we moved up there, they weren't building any houses. After we moved in, they, they put a bunch up there, and it's really changed our, our thoughts on the whole neighborhood. So, you know, we bought that expecting 20, 2,000, 2,200, 2,500 square foot houses on those each lot. But I didn't think they would put a backyard in my front yard. And, and that's, right or wrong or indifferent, I mean, if it didn't back up to Crestview, I don't know that I would have an issue. But having it, when you look at Crestview, which, if, you've driven up there, Crestview is, is the, the hill for that entire mountain, whatever you want to call it. I mean, that's, those are the, some of the best lots, the best views. So you were looking right, but if you'd looked left, you'd see Pinnacle Mountain, the river, that type stuff. So, like I say, I think that's, that's our issue. We, we've got another issue with, with this lot specifically, that's why I didn't really want to speak, but you, you put me out here, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the transparency because I know if I couldn't solicit it randomly that way, but I, I was curious, as I looked at the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
The impact to the people next door.
Right.
The noise, I, I think of the noise, you know, parties, I have a pool myself, but I'm unfortunate, nobody on either side.
But it's on our lot. I mean, most people are buying lots up there to, to keep people from building on them. And that's, they want to keep the view, they want to keep the space. The people that I know up there that are buying the lots are doing that, except for the RV issue and now this. But that's, we've been there four years, five, four years, five years. We love it. I mean.
No, thank you.
I hope that helps, or doesn't, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
And I do just do one follow-up, and, and so that's why it's important to keep that natural area in the front, so it looks natural, although I, I mean, it's going to be bad, or it's just going to be a lot with nothing on it, so. But there, there will be fence, the fence will be around the pool, so you wouldn't see the pool. So if someone had bought that lot anyway and built a house, there would still be that, that fence on the sides, most likely, that, so you won't be able to see the pool in any direction. All you're going to see is the trees and some fence.
So it will be a full privacy fence as you're going?
And the fence is only going to go up to that certain, the setback, so it's not even going to go probably half the lot, and then it'll be trees, you know, just natural area the rest of it.
So it would be on that 50, the 50-foot setback?
Yeah, just where the setback starts.
Okay.
You don't, you don't have to come and speak, so I'm going to allow you to come one more time, and then we'll, we'll begin to take action on that.
I've heard different numbers on the setback, that's, I don't know what.
Jason, can you pull that up, I emailed it to you.
It's a 50, the staff recommendation is 50.
50?
Yes, sir.
Jason can pull it up on the screen, we, we.
30, it was submitted with 30.
Submitted with 30, and then you pushed it back to 50?
So he's, he's pulling it up, so what we recommended was.
The 30.
That's non-clearing.
Staff's recommended to hear.
So that's where the fence would be, so, so it would function more like a backyard to you, so if you saw a pool, it would actually be seen from your backyard, not your front. We did that so it didn't present itself as a frontage to the street, it stayed more back.
Mr. Grummers, if the final plat, combined plat does not successfully be approved, would you hear items two or three?
Uh, no, sir, there'd be no need for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Comics, now that we've heard from the public, questions?
Chairman, the question that I have is, staff recommended a 30-foot non-clearing buffer, and if that were to be approved and built out as the applicant is planning there, what does the, the non-cleared buffer, I guess I'm trying to imagine what that looks like as compared to the finished yards? Does that, is there a way that if this were to be approved, that we could enforce that that space along the street is treated with sod and lawn and up to the point where there's trees, as opposed to looking like an unkept, unfinished lot like some of the others that aren't sold or built on?
That was, that was Director Grummers' recommendation, so I defer to him.
I mean, our intent for a non-clearing buffer was to prevent any ingress or egress from that site, but one of the comments that were made from one of the residents was, if this did go through, would there be a possibility of that being landscaped? So it's more beautified versus just, you know, unnatural. Staff is indifferent to that, it's either way.
Any other questions or comments? So, and the motion will need, I'm, I'm asking that it will be in the, in the positive or for approval regardless of your position, whether you're going to vote for or against, so it's clear on the vote. If, if it is a yes, it will be for, the final plat and combined plat. If it's no, it will be that you're not in support of, of the item for item number one. So if there's no further questions or comments, I will entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat for Majestic Point Block Two Lot Three R replat. Depending on any commissioners, staff comments?
Second.
Hearing first and second, we'll now take action on Majestic Point addition for block two lot 31R replat. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no?
No.
No.
Motion fails. So the final plat for the combined plan of Majestic Point addition Block Two Lot 31R does not move forward. As such, items two and three will not be heard, and we will move on to item number three, which is the, the BOA, I need to, I guess, do the board adjustment. Do I need to open the board adjustment, it wasn't called, that's why I asked.
Yes, sir.
So we'll now convene the board of adjustment for item number three, which is BOA 23-3 for appeal and variance on Two Plat Drive, which is a variance request for reduction of rear yard setback for accessory structure from 10 to 5 on Two Plat Drive. I don't know who's, you going to take this?
Oh, I'll go ahead and take it. I'll go ahead and take this one. So, let me get to it. So the applicant is on a corner lot with a reduced rear yard. He's requesting a, an accessory structure on the back which would extend five feet over the building setback. The structure has been provided to you in a, in a diagram, as well as the plot plan for the location of that. It actually is concealed by fence and some tree shrubs, and staff has not received any comments from any, from the notifications that were put out on this. So the variance is a request to extend the rear yard setback by five feet. And staff recommends approval of this one.
And we do have a public comment card, is the applicant, he has standing, would you still like to speak on item?
I just spoke with all the, my neighbors except for the one directly behind me.
State your name and address, we appreciate it, sir.
My name is Brent Camplain in Two Plat Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I spoke with Chuck Kaiser, the neighbor to the right of me, if you're looking at this driveway. He is all for it, as he would probably come hang out in my patio, in my pool. And I, none of the other neighbors have mentioned anything that I've spoke with this week.
Thank you, I do have a question, and, and this is from, I guess, Carol, from a little discussion at subcommittee meeting, is, and then I read your letter, too, as well. Is that, this, and I guess I should have drove by and looked at the backyard, I didn't do that, but you're, in your, in your letter, you state that this area's got poor drainage, and you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and you mentioned that at subcommittee. And you want to build this, build a deck to be able to have a use or water flow.
Just allow it. Yes, sir.
But the, the deck could be built, I think, without being covered, correct?
I'm not too sure. The, the, well, the.
Is this like the structure would be considered accessory structure or not, I'm asking.
Yeah, you can't build a, you can't build a deck into the setback.
That's correct.
Okay, so it'd have to be cleared.
Right.
So it wouldn't be treated like the concrete drop? So the concrete drop's in the setback?
Uh, correct.
So he could pour a patio?
He could, yes, sir.
But not a?
But not a, not a, a, a deck.
And then it's all about the ground, basically.
Yeah, it'd be considered a structure.
Or anything of that nature, you can have your concrete for parking and storage and whatnot, but you can't put a structure of any sort, so wood deck or anything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I got that clarified, thanks.
And, and we've actually just met with a builder this week to revise that plan. It's, it's going to be a, we're going to put a drain between the two concrete, we're actually, probably going to concrete this section. Extend.
But you're going to still cover it?
Yes, sir. But we're going to put a large drain that catches all of the drainage from that concrete, existing concrete patio. It's going to be a trough drain that goes straight down my driveway and out my driveway.
So a drainage improvement as well?
Yes, sir.
But you'd still, just to make sure I'm clear.
It's still going to be covered, though.
It's still be a cover.
Yes, sir.
You still intend to have it, the structure erected?
Yes, sir.
As shown in your.
Yes, sir.
Sketch up here. Okay.
Little old picture. Looks a lot different now.
Yes.
That was when it's.
Any other questions of the, of the applicant, and let him sit down. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, any other commissioner comments or just questions of staff? We'll see, and I'll ask the same, that the, the motion be made in the firm regardless of your position and as well as the second. So with that, we'll, we'll hear a motion on the appeal and variance for Two Plat Drive.
Mr. Carroll, initiate the request for approval of a variance for the reduction of the rear yard setback for an accessory structure from 10 feet to 5 feet on Two Plat Drive.
Thank you, Ms. White, go hear second.
Second.
Hearing first and second, and seeing no other comments or questions for staff, we'll now act on the appeal and variance request for Two Plat Drive. All those in favor of the variance signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, I'll say no.
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 I have to do a roll call.
Thank you.
I think I threw four, is it not, if I remember right? Tracy, you four?
Yes.
Yes.
You're four, yes?
I'm four.
You're four. Jason, let's get a vote.
I'm a no.
Ms. Winnick?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
No.
Rusty?
No.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion passes. Vote four to three, so we will, variance is approved for the, for Two Plat, uh, Four Two Plat Drive. I'd have to make a motion that we close the public hearing, but no further comment cards on any items tonight. We'll move into the city council liaison reports on November the sixth, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Gill.
Yes, Chairman, we had some readings, the second readings and first readings. There was a second reading of the ordinance ten ninety-eight, which was the preliminary And then ordinance eleven hundred, ordinance eleven oh one, eleven oh two, it all had to do with the twenty acres up on, as I said, Stone Canyon. So there really wasn't any action, it was just readings. And then, I don't know honestly if it directly affects the planning commission, but the Crafton Toll brought a report for a active transportation plan with the bike trail, pedestrian trails, and the council adopted that plan, so which is a kind of, to be a guideline for the future.
Is it going to be handled as a separate master plan to the streets, or is that something that's combined, Scott?
It's a separate plan.
Amendment or are they included in the street plan?
No, it's separate, and the mayor, you know, apologized for not bringing that to, through the commission first. There was a time period in which they were trying to get some grant, grants, and they needed this to get passed through the city council in order to be able to move on that, so he went in and took it to city council for that. But it went through a pretty extensive process, and if you'd like me to provide it to the commission, I can do that.
Just don't slide a little bit. Get over it.
It'll be okay, Craig.
So we got Commissioner Ramsey's not yet to be because we have moved up the, the meeting for this month due to the holidays, and we have the same for December, too, right, Mr. Gerber?
Uh, yes, sir.
So our subcommittee meeting.
Wait, no, no, next, next month is the same, there's no change.
No change.
Next, next year, next, next year, November will be the same as this November. It'll be short, but.
So we'll stay with the current plan, which is fourteen twenty-eight. Okay. Chair, we'll entertain motion to adjourn, seeing no further business?
One, one second, if you don't mind. If you don't mind, because the meeting is going to be December twenty-eighth, we, me and Scott have already heard that there's going to be probably three to four items on the agenda, so the commissioner, commissioner's not going to be in attendance, we know ahead of time. So make sure we, we're going to have a quorum, because we're in it, we're, we're anticipating at least four to five items on the agenda.
It was three, we'll go, now it's four, five.
Yeah, something's going somewhere between there.
Somewhere between there. I will, I'll be here, I don't have a, well, no, actually, I do have a conflict. I can be, let me see here. Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday. Yeah, now, I, Ms. Winnick may have to, you know. Sorry. Yeah, I, I'm out of town, I'm out of town. Hey, get me.
I'll be there.
I thought, I thought we were moving, uh, so there you go, there's one. I will not be in attendance.
I will be out of town.
I'm maybe out of town.
Why don't we move up?
I'm not sure.
How the applicant's, how's the submissions coming along?
Well, I mean, the submission deadline is not until December seventh. It'd be late notice, but we can move it up, well, next week is, we can move it up to December, to November thirtieth. That still gives roughly a week and, a week and a half, two weeks.
They may be pressed to get everything ready, but we've had our pre-con meetings, but they still have some work to do in order to get other submissions ready.
Would they like to work a little extra to make sure it goes through? Because if we don't call, we don't call, so. Or, or we could do the subcommittee on fourteen twenty-one. Yes, sir. Roy? Can we get their opinion, Troy?
Potentially.
I can tell by his facial expressions, he might have a comment.
No Thanksgiving for now.
He's a consultant, join the club.
Roy Andrews, two hundred Casey Drive, yes, we do have several submissions coming in next month, and that would be tight. But you're correct, I mean, if we don't have quorum, then it pushes it off, and one of them is very time-sensitive, so.
So that, what about if, if we, if we, subcommittee goes to fourteen, and we just live with seven days to the action committee on the twenty-first? How, I mean, I'm asking for the pre-con, you've already had pre-con with them, right?
We have. Is it possible that we could defer the meeting one week and just have a special meeting the week after on January fourth?
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's a possibility, that way we can.
That'd hit us on going to city council.
Yeah.
That pushes us back. I'd rather move it forward. We have to.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if, you're not going to go to city council on the first Monday, that's too quick after planning commission to get turned around to be able to get on that agenda, so agendas have to be the Wednesday prior to the city council, so you wouldn't be able to make that anyway, so your, your next city council, it's going to be the second meeting of the month, which would be the fifteenth.
Well, it's going to be a Tuesday because of MLK.
Okay, right, but either way, if we.
But if I move it up, I have a chance to.
If you moved it to the fourth, we would still have time to get on the agenda, which would be due on the tenth for the following week on the sixteenth.
But if we moved it up a week, then he could pick it.
Moved it up a week.
If we, if we move December's planning commission up a week.
It helps on both sides. It helps them get it approved here, move to council.
Well, and if, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, that's up to y'all, but I think that's what Mr. Andrews is warning.
It puts a little bit of a crunch on us, only because we lose a week from a review standpoint.
Well, I, I would suggest as, to help the staff out, if we move planning commission one week, we also move the sub, subcommittee one week and move that to the seventh.
Right.
That still gives us the, the, the two weeks to go through.
Just like we did for.
Because I, I can, I'm pretty sure.
But that's going to put his submission on the.
Between us and the counties.
On the thirtieth of November.
Prefer if we have two weeks as a staff, that would be preferable.
It usually is on November and December the same.
Yeah, that's why.
That's, I thought it was, so.
That's why.
My only recommendation for the January fourth would give him one extra week, otherwise we're pushing him up for his submission a week, and that's, you know, so it's up to, I have no problem, but it'd be best if we state that tonight as a public meeting.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to. So.
I can do the twenty-first and the seventh.
I can't do.
About everybody else.
Oh, you mean the fourth?